Morning, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll say again.
Motion by Shay, second by Jorgensen to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. First on the scheduled session, we have Matt Wyatt, Director Planning and Zoning, and Pam Calstrip, Zoning and Land Use Coordinator for a public hearing on proposed preliminary plat of Cedar Woods addition, a subdivision situated in Lewis Township, and to approve an authorized board to sign Planning and Zoning Resolution number 2024-01. I will entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Bell, second by Shay to open the public hearing. Melvin, will you call the roll, please?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors, Jorgens.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Dean Whitman.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now open with regard to the Cedar Woods addition.
Yeah, Ron Colpasca thirteen six oh two.
I'm only going to come up.
Well, if you want him to come up.
Yeah, let's, let's come up to the podium so that the speakers can pick you up and well.
Bring me up.
Say your name and address.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Ron Colpasca thirteen six oh two Bluebird Lane. And we're proposing, my son wants to build a house on the, what would be the back five acres, there's ten, ten acres total, and we wanted to sub, minus something there, provision there until he could build a house in the back five acres.
Do we got any issues with it, anything?
Well, this is a public hearing to speak in favor and oppose to the, the split of the parcel. Matt, is there anything you want to add to the description or?
Uh, just say his property is, I believe it's located off of Bluebird Lane down there.
Yeah.
And um, this falls in line with our chapter nine subdivision ordinances, the changes that we made back in 2015, where we allowed the exceptions to come in to there and um, it, or situations just like with what he described, you have a family member who was out there whose child wants to come back and build a house, so they're going to open up that lot for him, uh, that allows for the bank financing and all those things to happen, and we get one more house located in an area that's already has some housing out there, so there's not really any detrimental effects, anything. Uh, so it went through Planning Commission and Planning Commission recommended approval of this to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Matt.
That's all well, isn't it? Correct?
Yeah. Well.
Well accepted, yeah.
All right, Ron, you're in favor of the project?
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or against the project? Are you done? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Bell and a second by Jorgensen to close the public hearing. Um, before we do, so Mitch, I forgot to mention, no one on the phone rates are on the teams?
Nope.
Okay. Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Whitman.
Aye.
Bell, Shay.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Man, I don't have any issues with it at all. Um, it looks like they're, uh, that they're going to have a drive, use the same driveway.
They already have two separate entrances, so one lot, the existing home will use one entrance that they're currently using, and the proposed lot has an entrance as well.
And just for the board's awareness on it, is that this is um, what's termed a minor subdivision request, because there's less than four lots being created, because we also have major subdivisions that are in consideration right now as well, right? So this one is just considered a minor subdivision as far as our chapter nine code goes.
And typically, we do request that they have your entrances when they create these, but if there's already an existing entrance. Um, and John's okay with it, John Rasmussen is okay with it.
We didn't get that.
So the um, nine one one number would be different for each driveway.
Correct.
At the back from the planning and zoning, do you want to look at it?
No. Want to make sure.
Even right with this inside.
Yeah. That's kind of what I figured.
Okay.
I go for this night.
Other questions, Matt or Pam?
And I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh one.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Shay and a second by Whitman to approve and authorize the board to sign Planning and Zoning Resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh one. Additional discussion? Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Bell.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
And Jorgensen.
Aye.
Here.
Thank you. Next up, we have.
That's it. That's it.
Okay, thank you so much. Except we have Matt Wyatt, Director Planning and Zoning, and Pam Calstrip, Zoning and Land Use Coordinator, Public Hearing on Proposed Preliminary Plat of Leanin Subdivision, a subdivision situated in Lewis Township, and to approve and authorize board to sign Planning and Zoning Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero two. Right.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Bell, second by Shay to open the public hearing on the proposed preliminary plat of Leanin Subdivision. Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Bell.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
All right, we are now in public hearing to receive comments for, for and against the Leanin subdivision. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on behalf? Good morning.
I'm Jonathan Leinen, um, fifteen three eighty two hundred fourteenth street, um, it's our property that we're wanting to divide.
Which street is it?
Uh, two hundred fourteenth, I'm sorry. Um, we'd like to, um, as, I think you guys have the maps, um, I think it's about two point five acres one way and seven point five the other way, um, to be able to sell off or build, we're not a hundred percent sure what we're going to do with the additional land, most likely sell off and let someone else build there. Um, that's just what our plans are.
Thank you.
That's by two minutes road next to them, the two hundred and fourteen.
Correct. That's a, to give a reference point, it's just north of highway ninety two on two hundred and fourteenth street, which is the by two minutes section there.
Is there rural water there? City water?
Yeah, well water.
Okay. I was wondering about Greenview.
How's that, how's this one split up, Matt?
Yeah.
This one, uh, again, minor subdivision request that would normally have shared, but there is existing access and there's lot one. Well. But this will be.
Well, the other entrance, yeah.
There's a, access here.
Oh, okay.
The other chance.
But the, lot one is, is existing or not, it is existing. Somebody's living there.
He is.
So the.
Seven point six is both for sale. Correct.
Won't be able to divide it.
No, no. But this is a, um, obviously very high, highly desirable area of Palomino County on the two hundred and fourteenth street, so.
Right in that area, we had issues.
Cedar Woods, oh, they were gone, but Cedar Woods is a pretty common name, did that run by, to see if, I'm sure it did. But nobody's had that name before. Okay.
And the availability of this comes back again to that two thousand and fifteen code change that was done. I know, I always like to make sure we advertise and push that out there and allow some exceptions in the code to put a few more houses out on some of these by two minutes roads that we have.
It's going to be a lot more in this type of fashion. I need to, is that what you guys are seeing? I mean, a lot, a lot more going on.
I do think, yes, yeah, still continue to see like, um, what Mr. Means is able to do out there with stony brick and those housing developments going. I think you will see more of that happen.
Desirable area.
Yeah, I, I used to live in Trainer, that's, so I go back and forth every once in a while, but it's always amazing to see what's going on more than just what was there.
Popular school district, beautiful part of the county, yep.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Bell and a second by Shay to close the public hearing. Melvin, the roll call, please.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Shay.
Aye.
Bell.
Craig Whitman.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to, and authorize the board to sign Planning and Zoning Resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh two.
A move.
Second.
Motion by Whitman, second by Shay. Additional discussion? Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor, here's Bell.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
And Jorgensen.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Always welcome to stay the rest of the meeting. Watch online. We'll be looking for you.
All right, next on the agenda, Matt Wyatt, Director Planning and Development, discussion and/or decision to approve and authorize the board to sign Resolution number thirty four dash twenty twenty four, resolution setting date for a public hearing on designation of the twenty twenty four RMP Housing Urban Renewal Area and on urban renewal plan and project. Matt, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, uh, so the developer had come in and asked for the board to consider TIF, financing to help him out with his project that he had ongoing out there at the time, and as a part of this process, the board has to establish an urban renewal area over that designated parcel, and so this, when we've done these in the past and we did so on this time as well, it's, the urban renewal area is just to hit their parcel of ground. It doesn't expand out around that, it is specifically over that development towards it. Uh, we worked with Dorsey and Whitney on this, uh, and as a part of their process, now's the time where we adopt what they have developed for us on this, it does outline extended Exhibit A, the parcel of land that is there. Um, I also wanted to make sure, I pointed out to you in the plan, what page.
Yeah, we didn't get, we got the Exhibit A, there was no map or anything. Not on our package.
So you.
We, we got that.
You got that.
Map?
There's not a map.
Okay.
There's just the legal description of it, though this is on McPherson, just south or just east of Richfield Loop, as the development that we're talking about, so we're east of the Council West Airport, Ventry area, uh, it's a clover.
Cloverleaf.
Cloverleaf is the subdivision, which is the Richfield Loop area, and then this is just to the east of that, uh, the roads are in now, and so you should, I mean, it looks like somewhat of a subdivision out there at this point in time. But in the plan on uh, page three, where it talks about the description and use of the TIF down there, it lays out kind of the points of it, where the county intends to enter into a development agreement, that's where we're going to next. With the developer, with respect to the infrastructure of the project and to provide annual appropriation and economic development payments to the developer, they're under payments not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars, will be funded with the increment property tax revenues. So this is where it leaves it on the developer, right? If they don't build houses, if they're not, if they're not selling lots and they're not building houses, they're not going to receive any payments back towards the cost that they've already put in the infrastructure. And we're not going to, it's not just a carte blanche, you get your four hundred thousand dollars back, they're going to get the cost of the road, so they're going to have to submit the invoices and pay proof of payments towards what they paid for the roads, for the road that went in there. And then that would be the established amount of the funding that they would be eligible to get back, but they're going to have to sell and build houses that start paying property taxes in order for those funds to come back to them. And then along with that, because of the LMI set aside, that if it were to reach the four hundred thousand dollar mark, it's forty six point one four percent LMI set aside, hundred eighty four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars as a part of our joint agreement that we signed with the city of Council Plus on this project that was previous to this, the LMI set aside will go to the city of Council Plus for use on an LMI project in sites corporate limits of the city of Council Plus. So I just wanted to make sure that we make clear on those points, but the, the benefit of this is, is that, you know, it's on the developer to sell and build those out and start paying property taxes back to be able to receive those funds back to them for the cost of the infrastructure that they install.
How long is it for till?
Then.
Here's starting with what the first, you can actually see or starting with.
No, there's a point in there that the clock will get started on one of the next agreements that we sign, um, and then that will start, and it's not a phased deal, so this will be a one and done, the, the clock will run in.
Ten years.
Mm-hmm. We can ask for an extension on that, I believe, of five years, but I'd have to clarify that with the Amy up there, Dorsey and Whitney.
Now, why are they able to do that?
Do what?
Ask for an extension of five years on it. It's not good on residential tips.
Mm-hmm.
I see that you're going to show hardship of some sort, I'll tell you.
Yeah, I believe that, you have to show, they'll have to show something to be able to be that extension, and I, and I don't know that the Board of Supervisors necessarily has to agree with that extension, so. I mean, this, this is only going to, with the number of houses that are going in there, I mean, it's only going to generate so much funding. And I think the developers and the real estate agents that are involved now are aware of that.
Those are ten lots?
Eleven, it's twelve in total, one's already, one was the existing farm said, so you have eleven with potential.
That value will be part of the value.
Mm-hmm.
The resolution for today is to set the public hearing, and you wanted that to be on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four at ten AM, correct?
True. Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Whitman, a second by Shay to approve and authorize the board to sign Resolution number thirty four dash twenty twenty four. Additional discussion? Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Bell.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
And Jorgensen.
Aye.
Very much.
Thank you. That's all city water there, awesome.
Oh, hmm. Past the airport.
Ah, there's so much, skip, jump.
Well, yeah, Ventry's got city.
Yeah.
Right across the street. I'll be done with this, the roadways.
All right. On the agenda, discussion and our decision to approve and sign proclamation designating the week of April fourteenth to the twentieth, twenty twenty four, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Good morning.
We have a motion by Whitman and a second by Bell to approve and authorize the board to sign the proclamation designating this week as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Melvin, we, call the roll, please.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Bell.
Aye.
Whitman.
Shay.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
All right, I want to read the proclamation. I love doing this. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April fourteenth to the twentieth. Whereas emergencies that require police, fire, or emergency medical services can occur at any time, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Potawatomi County, Iowa Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with the emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Potawatomi County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Potawatomi County Board of Supervisors declares the week of April fourteenth through twenty 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 four to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Potawatomi County, Iowa, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. Signed the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty four. We can't thank you enough for what all you do.
For what you do.
Sam, will you introduce the team up with you?
Sure. I have Veronica Ross, Josh Darrington, Angie Dotson.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Yeah, I'll pick it down.
Do the four of you want to picture with the board?
Sure, baby.
Yes.
Okay, they should get a picture.
Garfield, would you mind taking it for Craig?
Sure.
He's out and about with trainings, taking pictures of trainings, and I think you would probably like this. It's your kind of.
Well, and, and paramedics, and it should be on the first responders.
Come on back in here. Ron, you shouldn't stand in the back.
I was hoping to.
She was going to stand right in front of me.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Garfield.
Yep.
Thanks, you guys, thanks.
Go ahead.
Right, then Sam is going to provide us an update on the nine one one communication center.
Yeah, so again, thank you for the proclamation. Um, so we are currently still hiring, as we've been in previous conversations, um, we have a total of four in training right now, and uh, one's expected completion dates, May twenty third, another one's July twenty first, and then two more in September, so. Pending the progression through the training program, goes like we hope it will, so, but we still have openings, and on Monday we'll be posting our job opening again, reached out to Heather with HR, and she'll be getting that posted on Monday. Tomorrow, we actually have another, we have a second interview tomorrow with one applicant. Depending on how that goes, we may have one position that we could offer to them, so. So yeah, we are still hiring, and in our last posting, we had three hundred and fifteen applicants. There might have been a couple duplicates in there, but um, out of those, and that was for two and a half months it was open. However, we were only able to hire three out of that number. So we lose a large portion, over half of the applicants probably, to the individual themselves either not completing the task that we asked them to do, or they simply do not uh, respond to our request to take a test. We have a critical test as our first phase of testing, and some of those individuals simply will not take it. We have changed from an in-person critical test to online, where we simply provide them the link, and they're able to take a test at home, hoping that maybe we would get more people to complete the testing process. So we have tried to change some of our processes in order to appeal to more applicants. So yeah, that's kind of where we're at with our hiring.
See, we talked about maybe speeding things up a little bit.
Yep.
Help?
Yep, so we didn't make another change. Um, this last hiring process, we basically broke everything down in two weeks. So Veronica here would, one week, we're in, and when we receive the applicant's information from HR, we send out notification to them to schedule, excuse me, we don't have to schedule anymore, they have to take the critical test. And so that week goes by, we give them a deadline, and then we have the next step, and so we have tried keeping that process going, and even though the position was still open, we were hiring people while the position was still open, trying to continue pushing people through. And I've mentioned in the past, we are only able to train so many people at one time. We had more openings than we could um, fill at one time with trainees. So we had a, we closed the process, we, we told some applicants that we were going to have them on a waiting list. We called them back for that second interview, and only one of them was still available, so. And we knew that going in, and I explained that to the applicant as well, that, you know, our current training program is full, we're going to have you on a list. Um, we understood that if we reach out, that you may not be available, and that was the case. So we had one, that's the one we have tomorrow, that was still available for a second interview. So we are trying to speed it up.
Do you have to live in Potawatomi County to get?
No, you do not.
You can live in Omaha.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
For those positions, you do advertise in those areas.
Correct. Um, HR takes care of the advertising for us through multiple um, online and other options that are generally people are referring to for job postings, I believe, but Gov Deal, or not Gov Deals, but.
Governmentjobs.com and then it, and Indeed, which is, which is a big one, um, and then depending, sometimes it might go to some colleges, but when you take a look at where the applicants are coming from, they're coming from Indeed. So some of those other outside ones that we might do here and there really doesn't get us applicants, because NeoGov will track where they're coming from when they're applying, so the biggest one, almost everybody goes through Indeed. And they can go to our county website, of course, but it's all, it's all goes to the same place, to NeoGov, where they can apply.
Yep. We were fortunate enough to have a applicant that came from another dispatch center, so that helped with, it's not this, as they use different software, but just the fact that he was working as a dispatcher has helped him through that learning curve on what he needs to do, and so he has progressed a little faster. We have the same training program, and we're advancing him as far as if we feel he's comfortable, and he says he's comfortable, then we may cut certain parts of that training program a little shorter if he's already demonstrated that he can perform the task. So we're trying to um, evaluate that. So we're trying to evaluate that individual as he progresses through each phase of the training program.
Sam, you mentioned that you have four in training right now.
Correct.
Does that, does that bring you to full strength, or are you still four short?
Um, we're still short, uh, three, three. So I still need to get three more hired and on paper, assuming all these make it through the training, and assuming we don't have anyone else quit in the meantime.
Of those three that are in the process now, you mean? You know, you said you had three hundred and fourteen applicants.
Three hundred.
Made it through.
Only three of them made it through.
That's one percent.
I know, it's terrible. I agree with you.
So those three then would get you to full, full strength, correct?
No. We, 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 oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're talking about the three in the, that we just hired. Those will not. We, we still need to hire three more people. That's why we're posting it on Monday.
Oh, so those, those three that are, that you're working with right now will just get you closer to the people.
Yeah.
So you're still three short of being full.
I still need to hire, I still need to get three more people on paper in the building, in the training program. Correct.
When do we need, when does the board need to consider increasing your budget to handle those, as we mentioned during the budget process, that if you got to that level, we would make sure the funds were there for that.
Right, so it's a six-month training program.
Okay.
I'll say it takes maybe two months when we post it on Monday before we even give someone a conditional offer and have them working. The background process takes about thirty days. And if we're able to, the job posting is gonna be open, I think, for one month. And then it's gonna take us, you know, close to that one month to have them take all the testing, to do the interviews, and then to have the background start. So we will be pushing into the end of this calendar year, probably. Assuming everything goes great, and I get those three people hired, we get them through training, and then that's what I anticipated coming back to the board and asking for an increase in our authorized strength for four more additional people. Currently, our budget is been approved for these people, is my understanding. So I have the funding there to hire what I've already been authorized to hire.
With the three hundred fourteen, fifteen, how many dropped out because of timeline?
I don't know if, like, how long it, the process takes. I don't know if I could put a number to that, because some people are flooding the market with multiple applications, and they may have got a job offer, and it really didn't have anything to do with how long our process was taking. Now granted, yes, if we're able to speed the process up and get them hired before they get the other job offer, that'd be great, but our process is just it is what it is. It's, and we can't really cut it down anymore than what we've been trying. I mean, we've been trying, and we're trying to cut days. We're not to the point where we're cutting weeks or months, we're trying to cut days, so it keeps it going.
Well, our processes are that unique from everybody else's, I think.
When you're talking about just nine one one, or are you talking about jobs in general? Well, can you talk about like other jobs in this county office, like the recorder or anyone else, they're different.
No, no, I mean, as far as nine one one goes, I mean, the processes that, whatever the nine one one dispatcher have to do in whatever SARP Douglas.
Right. Not all of them provide, do a as thorough background as we do, I would probably say that.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's a, a choice we have made for ourselves to make sure we are getting quality applicants.
Right.
And so not every nine one dispatcher, dispatch center is required to do that thorough background.
So how many do you suppose we lose there? I mean, the number's just astronomical, like you said, one percent, three. We gotta, every thousand people.
Sure, but you also gotta keep in mind that some people maybe are applying simply to fulfill requirements of
Yeah, unemployment.
Unemployment.
Sure.
Yep. And
They know they want past background and.
Right. Yeah.
No, I understand that.
Sure.
You mentioned thirty days for the background check.
Correct.
Do we outsource that responsibility?
So we do it internally through our investigation division. However, the investigators have are doing a different process with the jail now, as far as the jail backgrounds, so that the jail is doing some of their backgrounds for their own staff, so hopefully that'll possibly increase the turnaround for our operators. But there's also, they're sending out information to previous employers and references or whatever they're doing, and they have to wait for that individual to return that documentation. So sometimes we are waiting on other individuals to provide us information for that background.
Oh, what? Current, I, well, theirs, they talk to family, they talk to friends. Do you get any referrals from, from those folks? I mean, you talk to your friends, you're, you have people that you're talking to, you describe your job to them.
Other folks have, yeah.
Okay, so, so you do get referrals in that, in that instance, right?
They are actively on their personal social media accounts, sharing the posts that we may do on our Facebook and whatever, so they are actively trying to encourage other family members that they feel would be a good fit for the job to apply. But it, it's a unique position, and it's a tough position.
I was at Riverside High School yesterday morning, and one of the students who had gone through your, the youth leadership position.
Yep.
She was up front talking to the sophomore saying, and I went through the nine one one center, and it is really awesome, and everybody should go and see there, and it's a great place to work.
Well, I appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah.
Future recruits.
Hopefully, yeah, definitely.
Then when I was down there with you, it was Thursday, noticed the chairs are, what's the feedback you're getting from those, for those that are right, was that the right move?
Um, so, yeah, those are the same brand and model of chair that we've always had, it's the other ones just were worn out, so, yeah, they, they do appreciate the chair, and that's what they like, yeah.
You know, if you probably seen the other ones, the armrests look like a dog had chewed on them, so. We at least give them some comfortable chairs, and I think it has some lumbar support too, right?
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
Well, much like our dispatchers, those chairs don't get a break.
Yeah, someone's sitting in them all the time, generally, so.
Well, I hope you, I wish you well on those three, Sam. And look forward to hearing from you again.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Hopefully soon.
Yeah, but I really appreciate you coming up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Veronica.
Thanks.
What, what's the timeline on the new consoles?
Um, we're hoping to have them installed mid-July.
July, yeah.
Yep. So that is the plan. We're actively communicating every day, and they're, they just, they're booked out, so I kind of logged in our date, and so we're just finalizing some of the other details. So I'm excited for that project to to finish and be able to have the operators have some nicer furniture. Yeah. Appreciate the support on the funding for that as well. Thank you.
What do we do with the old equipment? Just recycle?
It was probably gonna be recycled, the company would charge us to haul it away. Um, I've talked with buildings and grounds in my text, and I think um, there's also a, a, some, another center that may be interested in taking them off our hands, so.
Smaller county or something, I understand.
So that was kind of that, new, we're looking at.
Where is going with it?
Yep. Because otherwise, we're gonna have to bring in a dumpster, roll-off dumpster to put them in, and then pay for the disposal and all that, so. Because they're, they're not supported as far as the parts and things like that.
Thank you.
So.
Some, some of those don't work either.
Correct, there, we have one for sure that does not function, yeah.
What brand, is the brand that you're getting the same as the one that you're disposing?
No. It's different.
Who, who made, is that Motorola stuff too, or not?
No, it's a that's probably one thing I'm not sure Motorola's got their hands in. It's Zibex is the current furniture, Zibex is the current furniture, Heavens is the one that we're probably gonna lean towards going with.
Who are the?
Furniture.
Monitors?
Furniture.
Well, how about the monitors?
The monitors are just standard.
Oh, so, okay.
Monitors.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Uh, one more question, Sam. When when the fires were rolling on the, on the river, was that a pretty hectic place down there?
Yeah, it, it gets busy, you know, especially when they kick off, you know, especially along an interstate. Everybody is calling, and that's, you know, that's what we expect the citizens to do. But it gets to be overwhelming in the center because they're all answering the phone and all the other things, so they're trying to sift through the calls that we are already, we know it's a fire, we know where it's at. We sift through the calls to see if they have any additional information, or is that nine one one call for something completely different? So we're trying to go through those calls and determine, okay, it's a fire, yep, we're aware of it, thank you, hang up, answer the next one. And we're trying to go through those as fast as we can, so we can get to that person who is maybe having a heart attack, and they're just in the midst of all those other calls, so we have to answer them all. And it just gets really busy, so anytime we have the ongoing fire, like maybe along the interstate, we can give messages, message boards up saying it's a control burn or where, you know, that helps with minimizing the calls coming into the center.
You had to bring anybody else in for that?
I think they did that particular day when it first started, they put out an emergency page for someone to come in and help, because it gets to be overwhelming.
And then on the interstate, they brought in those signs. Control burn.
Yeah, so, you know, those prolonged events, yeah.
Prescribed burn, it was controlled.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, thanks again.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Coming up.
Veronica.
Bye, Veronica. Here, Sam.
Yeah, you guys do.
Supervisor, general assistance, discussion and our decision to approve and authorize the board chairperson to sign contract number twenty four dash zero nine for twenty twenty four Potawatomi County Housing Trust Fund Grant Agreement.
Hi there, how are you guys doing?
Good.
Good. This is just a grant that a continuation of a grant that we currently have, and that we've had for probably like the past, last five years. Um, and this award one's for twenty five thousand. Pretty much the kind of standard practice we're gonna be doing for deposits, first month's rent, and then also gonna try to kind of recover some of the administrative costs of distributing those grants, we hadn't done that in the past, so. Just because it does take time and it gets costly in that aspect of it, so that is what that is covering, I'm hoping to, on their end, they just paid, uh, they hope to provide that assistance to sixteen individuals, and for the, the current one that we are on is an amount of like thirty thousand, and we have ten thousand left, and we've done assistance on twenty nine people, so the, the max amount that they set for is one thousand five hundred, and usually like some people might only need like six hundred of it, or you know, maybe a full thousand of it, or, you know, depending on the amount, so we kind of carry that over to other individuals, try to help as many folks as we can. That's that.
Debbie, how long did that party last?
Um, well, for the grant, um, like this one that we're on, it usually they begin in November, December first, and so that one was for thirty thousand, and except we're down to nine thousand five hundred currently, so it'll run out, but on this, the one that's starting up then for twenty five thousand, it does start or it had started February first, so frankly, I could, once I run out of that one, I could start on this one. But those certainly run out, I'm sure, before November thirtieth, the twenty twenty five deadline, so just kind of, kind of see how it goes, and if we run out of it, that's, unfortunately, that's, that would be the end of the deposit for months rent part. Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we're going through the thirty thousand pretty fast, so.
I think that push is.
I'll second.
On the contract, there's just a spot for you to sign, Susan, so.
Is this the only grant you deal with?
Yeah.
Okay.
For myself, yeah, general assistance.
Is it hard to manage?
Um, no, it does take a little bit of time just to, you know, gather all this, all the paperwork, there's additional paperwork that is requested besides from what the typical general assistance clients require.
Call from a vendor was to help us manage our grants. And thinking that they were all managed by the auditor's office, but you manage yours, Maria manages hers, and.
It's manageable. You know, we have contact, in contact with the landlords on a regular basis regards to folks, and even if we're trying to find housing, trying to make contact with those like different landlords in the area, and just get the documentation that's needed, which isn't a lot from the vendor aspect of it, it's more so from the, the client, seeing the documentation from them.
I'll tell the vendor to go away.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless Maria wants to share with you.
Okay, Debbie, thanks, thanks for managing that grant and not allowing that to be managed by the auditor.
Yeah, and I had, and like a, just kind of general assistance review, and that just kind of entails all the different aspects of just all the different things that general assistance includes, like as far as like how much has been distributed out. We get reimbursements from different sources, like social security and the grant, and, and from different clients. Um, and then inquiries, and then I just do kind of a tally of on, like when I gather information from individuals, uh, different aspects as far as like where they live, how many people are in their household, uh, their age range of like the, the head of the household, what they're requesting, their income source, and then how much the rent is, and so it's in there, it kind of details all those different aspects, and some like points of interest, I'd say were, would be like the income, well, first off, the amount of requests has increased quite a bit, which is taking you know, obviously more time on, to manage all those, but on a positive note, um, the number of people reporting employment as well as social security versus no income at all has increased, so the amount of people saying, oh, we don't have any income, that's remained steady, but other two areas people are having money, so that's, that's a good thing. Um, on a, on a bad note, the monthly rent and all, it seems that before, several years ago, the average was like five hundred, six hundred. Now it's, most people are saying their rent's nine hundred plus, so, you know, it's an unfortunate thing, which, you know, it's obviously to be expected.
They verify that, though.
What?
They verify that, the, the rent.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Are they allowed to give more than one assistance in a twelve-month?
Um, so with general assistance, there's three different programs, there's the interim disability, so those are folks that are applying for social security. And so those are our ongoing assistance, because we help them, because they don't have any income source, we're paying the rent while they're waiting for social security, so those are continual. Typically, though, it's a one-time assistance program, so that's a once-a-year program. And then we have a back-to-work one, where if they don't have any income and they're seeking a job, they have to complete requirements before they're approved, but that could, program could be up to three months.
Thank you.
I, I enjoyed reading the report, I love the data.
And it, and that's kind of a little odd because of the dates, because I, when I initially began, it was based off of just like the conversations I have with people, and I tracked it like January through December versus a fiscal year. And, um, and then later on, decided, you know, probably it'd be good to have some of the, the budget information in there, and and, you know, I know that's based off of fiscal, but it's just like, well, let's be kind of complicated to switch everything around and not duplicate or drop off people, so I just kept it January through December.
You have a question in a second.
I do have a motion, by Bell, the second by Shay. Do we have any other questions for Debbie?
I'm good. Thank you.
Do you want me to leave one that you need signed?
Please. All right, so we have a motion by Bell and a second by Shay to approve and authorize the chairperson to sign contract number twenty four dash zero nine for the twenty twenty four Potawatomi County, County Housing Trust Fund Grant Agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, John, it's your turn. John Rasmus, an engineer, discussion and our decision to approve Iowa DOT funding agreement four dash twenty four dash raise dash zero zero five in the amount of four million nine hundred thousand for project HDP dash seven eight thirty, for N six oh one dash sixty. In the amount of four million nine hundred thousand for project HDP dash seven eight thirty, perin six oh one dash sixty eight dash seventy eight.
This was the raised grant. One about a year ago, uh the funding agreement allowing us to spend these funds, but they also combined the estate aid in there for five hundred thousand. So it's four point nine total. As a project developed, Tina won one point five million for the bridge and under it, then later we won the rise for the four point four, so we had. Too much federal money, I guess, we can't match federal money with federal money, so. Uh, her grant, we had to rewrite that agreement for five hundred thousand in state. And let the state keep the federal funds, which is kind of best deal for the state, so. Ended up six hundred thousand dollars of county funds on a five and a half million dollar project and.
Not too bad, is it?
Not too bad, just gonna do the work now.
Deal.
I get some money, he might get the money. Never know.
Sign us, we get the money.
I would make a motion to approve.
A second?
Roll roll that math through me one more time, that you six hundred thousand.
There was, well, six hundred thousand part mark is our local match, that's twenty.
Okay, okay.
We said too many, too much federal funds and it's been rewrite.
So do they, they don't, I don't know if we've done enough of them, they don't penalize us for. Not spend, sending money back or anything.
No, no, it's just, the state has changed the pool of money they were spending from to to help us out.
Lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay.
They pulled out the federal funds they had dedicated to us and put state funds back in.
I do too.
They were limited to half million on the state funds.
Okay, okay, thank you.
John, are there other counties involved in this batch of funds that came from this?
Oh, there's, there's seven of us, Lake County, Page.
Is is Clay the administrator of the grant funds?
Lake County, yes, yes.
So we have a good relationship with them, right?
Right.
Okay, we just want to make sure we get our mind on Clay.
Yeah, they have a quarterly report coming up, I think this week or next week. Was their first quarterly report on the the funds. Uh, Page County thinks already signed the agreement, and I think we're probably about second getting the agreement done.
Why did they put one county in charge of that?
Uh. The federal government just wants these huge projects and we're just not capable of getting those, so they like to see the availability right now.
Okay.
Project contracts come through, it's, whatever the overlords want, that's what.
However, as long as we get our nice share, that's that works.
That's.
Good. Okay.
Well, I really appreciate the efforts from you and your team to get that grant, I mean, getting that bridge replaced for six hundred thousand dollars is phenomenal. Benefit people a buck out, I mean, it's huge. That's a lot of money.
Thank you.
Well done.
John, it seems like you're getting very good at grant writing.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but we're really trying to focus on it, the problem is there's just so much paperwork administration and. You really want to get one grant settled before you start the next one too, so. I guess we're. Time is now to chase the next one of you.
We have a motion by Shay, a second by Jorgensen to approve, to sign the DOT funding agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Can I get some question?
Yeah.
John, I was out by the roads operations center, went through there yesterday, just parking. Why don't we have road operations centers on the other side of the building? I I think that was the first thing that struck me when I went in there to the parking, I thought, oh, no one knows what it is till you get in there.
I think on the sign at the gate, when we get that far, we don't have a gate in the contract, so we'll have to wait until we get the property turned over.
Or even do the same sign on the other side of the building, but you got windows there, correct? It's a nice sign. Just question. All right. I'm putting you on the spot.
All right, John Rasmussen again, discussion and our decision to approve right-of-way contract to Meredith Farms, Inc. for project L dash twenty twenty four. Perin LY twelve dash seventy three seventy eight.
We have. All four of these right-of-way contracts are for some. Uh, county bridges are in replacement pipes, so the bridges are small and they fit in the right-of-way pretty well, when we put the pipe on, we're extending on to private property just a little bit, so. Uh, we're just cleaning that up with the landowners before we construct anything.
They pretty much agreeable to it? Okay. I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
John, on all these, uh I've never. Haven't noticed it before, does it require notary signature on these?
Oh. Oh, this depends on standard language we use forever, I don't know if there's. Newer and better or something different, I guess, but.
Maybe that's a question for for Kristen, whether there should be a notary block on there or not, I think there probably should be. Never really noticed it before, but. Anyway.
I don't think.
I mean.
I don't think.
On an easement?
This is just the contract. Contract that gets recorded.
I think we gotta get the 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 right here where we use the same form for twenty years and I don't know.
So.
Using any of that.
These, even though you're switching out. A bridge for with a tube. These will still be considered a bridge?
No, they they'll come off the inventory list for bridges.
They will.
Yeah, so that's be, that's be twenty feet.
So these are all, you, all all these we're doing are gonna be less than twenty foot?
Yeah, so there's just two bridges on all four of those easements are.
Oh, okay.
Both sides are thin, but.
Good.
Yeah, they'll, they won't be bridge in our bridge inventory anymore.
Eliminated a couple of bridges out there. Perfect. All the batter. Yeah.
And then we have four actions we for each one of the right-of-way, so on the first one, we have a motion by Shay and a second by Belt.
This was on the Meredith Farms.
Yeah, this is Meredith.
I want you, you going on the same way then?
Yeah.
Just noted.
Yeah. All right, so additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. The second one is to approve the right-of-way contract to six down seventy three dash two go LLC for project L twenty twenty four. LY twelve seventy three seventy eight. So this is the same thing.
Move. Second.
Motion by Wickman, second by Shay to approve, all those additional discussion?
Aye. Oops, sorry.
All those in favor?
Sorry. Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion is carried. Next one is approve the right-of-way contract to Don Parish Trust for project L dash twenty twenty four. Perin NO twenty two dash seventy three seventy eight.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Wickman, second by Belt to approve. Don Parish Trust. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. And the last one, approve the right-of-way contract to Daniel W. and Emily Hunick.
Honeykey.
Honeykey.
Honeykey for project L dash twenty twenty four. Um, NO twenty two dash seventy three seventy eight.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Wickman, second by Shay. Additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. Did we miss anything, John?
Nope, all right, you the original, what is it?
Jeanette, you decide, yeah.
Yes, please. We have to bring him back later to add a notary, we will do so.
So no reaction.
Yes. All right, now we turn to Maria Seek, Administrator Public Health, discussion and our decision to allow signature authority for DHHS Substance Abuse Grant Application.
Morning.
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 I, so I received notification of funding opportunity from the Department of Health and Human Services about the county substance abuse grant application. And this is an opportunity that's available to the Board of Supervisors only, most of ours are under the Board of Health. And um. The program area is substance abuse prevention and treatment. It's a fiscal year grant, it's available every year to all the counties in the state. For ten thousand dollars in grant funds with a thirty thousand dollar match. I've got, uh Jeanette and Mitch are both tied into the grant. And uh we're intending to manage it under public health and tying it into some of our existing programs. So the uh. The work plan that we're gonna use these funds for is to increase the work with the local schools. Primarily the ones out uh in the rural areas. But we're currently, we have a health educator that's currently in three of the schools right now and does personal responsibility education. And with some tobacco information, so we have some of that work in the schools with the students. And we're gonna work with the school administration to review their policies on substance abuse prevention in the schools. And then provide some community outreach on uh Your Life Iowa, that the campaign that the state has put together.
Do we have the thirty thousand match?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Were you getting that?
Where am I getting it? Um, we're. Uh, we're gonna use Jordan's time, so we have staff that are already working on our community opioid action plan and we're gonna use that as match.
So it's an in-kind match?
It is, definitely.
That's sweet. Yeah, so this is a Board of Supervisors grant.
The grant application at this point.
Yeah, right, we, if you were to, uh before chair and I can receive that, we don't have to monitor that, do we?
Absolutely not, it's, it would be managed under public health and tied within with all our programs.
This is the first time you've done this?
It is.
Okay, but you'll be doing this every year?
Yes, yeah.
Seeable futures ever?
The first year I've heard about it.
Okay.
So I think it was just that direct email connection from the state.
I think those opioid funds be available as a match also in the future?
Yes, that is, that is match.
And that, and the opioid funds is your match?
It is.
Okay, I thought you said it was in kind.
It is, well, no, so we're using the opioid funds on our community opioid action plan. And we're going to use that as match for this grant.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion by Shay, second by Jorgensen to approve and allow Maria Seek to. Sign the DHS Substance Abuse Grant Application. Got what you need?
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has carried. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Good job.
Right, Jason Slack, Director Buildings and Grounds and Garfield Coleman Risk Manager, update on recent developments regarding wind damage to the courthouse roof. What's going on?
I just wanted to make more aware that we did sustain some wind damage to the roof of the courthouse. Um, as well as a couple of the tower site building roofs uh out in Oakland and McLauchlan. Um, it appears to be wind damage out there as well. So what happened is the rubber came delaminated from the insulation, uh which means that the glue didn't hold anymore and the winds started to move that rubber around. So what we did temporary, to temperate it in is we held some weight up on the roof to hold that rubber down until we can get the problem addressed. Uh, we don't have any issues right now in regards to leaks, so we should be good until we can get a permanent fix on this.
And at that time, I contacted the insurance company and submitted a claim, uh been in contact with the adjuster, the adjusters, uh. Waiting on the last uh two properties within the county, uh because I told him it's a possible two other sites at the uh tower sites. And so I sent him that this morning, so then I will coordinate at time for him to come out to uh review the courthouse and the other additional properties. Uh, he did mention to me on the phone that they had a lot of wind and wind damages within this area. Yep, that has been reported that he's been so busy on, so he's gonna try to get out of here as soon as possible.
Did either board member see the video? Um. Did any of you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Garfield had that on his phone.
Right.
Wow.
Yeah, it was a big wave, so.
Are the towers, those little buildings, the towers, is, are those rubber roofs too?
No, they're, there is some kind of a synthetic roof, I'm not sure exactly what they have on it, if it's hot tar. It's, it's kind of sim- similar to what you'd see on like a modular home.
Okay. They're not have any leak issues either, right?
Not that I know of, not on the inside, those roofs are concrete on there, but they probably should be addressed.
Cause that's. Putment in there that wouldn't probably work real well with water.
Yep.
Jason, how long do we have to have this uh um engineer?
I would recommend that we engineer it because there's, we've done a lot of work on that roof over the past five years with all the uh construction. We removed some old DX air conditioning units that were on the roof, so we have some curbs that need to go. Uh, we have, also have some pitch pans and and lines that are dead up there that need to be eliminated. Um. I I feel it needs to be engineered because we do have line sets for the new chillers up there running across the roof and I want to be able to dictate to the roof. Exactly how we want that to be done.
The, one of the pictures has a pretty decent sized crack in the, in the roof.
That was patched.
Um. How long, how long would this project take for engineering, bidding, installation?
I'm not, I'm not hundred percent sure, it depends on how much, how busy the engineer is, I would, I would hope that we would be on it in six months.
I think when you, when you talk about engineering and insurance company, we gotta make sure the insurance company is okay with doing engineering because they send out their adjuster. And they go off of the adjuster's um. Uh, write up a claim report on the actual, the value, the uh of the building, the replacement value, so they look at a different form or so. Um, I can approach ICAP and see what they pay for a engineer to to do the study, but I'm not sure yet, so. Um, that's something I'll have to address with them to see whether they want to pay for that, that might be additional cost to the county if we decide to go that route, just wanna make sure you're aware of that.
What's the age of that roof, Jason?
It's twenty four years old right now.
You know, it's time for it to be probably.
Well, so, another reason we want to engineer it is just to make sure that the tapers are correct on it, so the roof is draining properly.
You know, I noticed the um. The framing around the parapet walls, has that been? Uh, with technology, has that gotten any better, or is that, is that what we're?
I'm, I'm not following you, I guess.
Well, you know, on the, around the parapet walls, right here?
Yeah.
Is that, that'll get replaced too, is that?
Yep.
Is there any new technology that makes that?
No, typically what they do is they'll put termination bar, the rubber will come off the wall, they'll put term bar, then it'll come back over it with some counter flashing. And that's, that's pretty much all I'll do. Yep.
We're just talking about roof replacement on the old part of the courthouse, not on the new addition.
Yes, everything that's on the high part.
You, you want anything from us today?
No.
Is this an update?
Just an update.
Okay, I would. I would say rock and roll and get things rolling. Sure you are, it sounds like it were.
Jason, you said this, that roof was twenty four years old?
Correct.
Uh, you know, I have got contact by my, by insurance company that insured my house, because of the storms in our area. All these, matter of fact, insurance companies are starting to not insure houses and everything. Uh, he was telling me, he's just calling me to be aware of increases that are gonna come in the fight, but uh. Uh, yeah. I don't wanna say this, uh. There, uh, there, there are improvements in the, the, what's materials used for roofing these days, you know, because of this factor, is, are you aware of that aspect of it?
Yeah, well, and it's a, it's an EPDM rubber roof system, is what we have on there currently, and we're looking to replace it like for like. Um, it's fully adhered. Uh, and it's still, it's still a tried and true roof.
You, you mentioned there weren't any leaks, did you check it after the rain this morning?
Yeah. We haven't had any reports of any leaks, everything looks good. Yeah, we haven't had any reports of any leaks, everything looks good.
You know, it's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Garfield, you talked this morning that the insurance will replace what's there, correct?
That's correct.
That they don't wanna do any upgrades.
Once, once the adjuster comes out, they look at all the damage, they do a write-up, and then they do what they call a replacement costs. And if they come out and determine that the whole roof need to be replaced because they fit that a certain percentage, say fifty percent or seventy-five percent of the roof, then they will. Uh, pretty much give it a total loss and say we replaced the whole roof at, at, at that time, so based off the adjuster, we won't know anything until he comes out. To uh take a look at it.
So if we were to upgrade, gotta be on us above what they write, replace.
Place what, what you currently have there, so, or, or better, if that line of product is no longer on the market, then they will go in higher, they would not go lower. Right.
Jason, will you look at the newer product also when they come out?
Yeah, what we're looking at is sixty mill EPDM rubber roof system that's wholly adhered.
Okay.
Um, it, it's a good roof, and that's what we've been putting on all the public health building, um in our new addition here at the courthouse. Yeah, we would go with white rather than black, it's currently black, uh we would go with white because it's reflective.
Right.
I'm not sure if we're gonna get an incentive for that, for going that way, uh they used to provide incentives though for that.
Okay, you're talking about flat.
Correct, yep.
Have you been up there?
Did you have the roof on schedule for replacement on?
I was looking at it in our five-year plan, um just look, just a little bit sooner than what I expected.
I brought out at jail, sheriff's office.
That roof, roof was replaced in twenty twelve.
Not the old roof?
Yeah, and we did do a roof inspection over there, and it's good.
Didn't you have any waves the other day?
No.
That's incredible how that.
Yeah.
Was coming like that.
Doesn't take much for that wind to get up underneath there.
I never seen anything like.
Any other questions for Jason or Garfield?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Only other thing that we got, I checked with insurance too on, on, if we have the, the uh power sites in the roof here, we have a ten thousand dollar deductible. On, on the total cost of it, so.
Aren't they that big of a building?
No, they're super small. They're probably two squares, you know, two hundred square feet total.
So we'll be, we'll be replacing those on our own, possibly.
Just wanna make sure they might leak it. Could be expensive deal.
Yeah, we're, right now, we're observing no water inside the structure.
Keep going down. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, Nick, the financial officer discussion and our decision to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-four. Final resolution of the Potawatomi County Board of Supervisors regarding wage increases for non-union employees.
Double, sorry.
Motion by Wickman, a second by Belt to approve the board to sign resolution thirty-five twenty twenty-four, is there? Discussion?
I think we did a pretty thorough job going through all that stuff for the last few months in budget sessions and stuff like that, so I think, got to get everything addressed, so. Thanks for all your guys' work in various departments that helped put, uh, put that together and stuff in grades and everything that's in that uh, uh, exhibit on there as well.
Thank you, Nick. Right, no additional discussion, Melvin, will you call the role, please?
Chairman Miller.
Hi.
Supervisor Bell.
Hi.
Wickman.
Hi.
Shay.
Hi.
And Jorgensen.
Hi.
Lee, boss treasurer, discussion and our decision on rehire of treasurer clerk two and pay. Lee, take it away.
I need help, and I have been down three people for quite some time. It's not easy to hire people, and it's not easy to keep. It's a stressful job, and it's challenging, and there's a lot to learn. Uh, I had a previous employee approach me or email me, said she wanted to come, what do you think I said? Yes, there's no training, she's, you know, she's very um. Smart like a sponge, and I'm starting her higher than, you know, normal because I don't wanna lose her, and I just lost one on Friday. So, you know, I've gotta do what I've gotta do.
I'm making motion to.
You know, it's getting awful these days, that you go through all these applications and it just closed on Friday, and you know, like. Sam said, you know, you go through all this, but you gotta really find something, and they get to the end of the rope where, you know, they're trained. And then they go to the counter, and, you know, it's just not for them, or it's just, you know.
Like ninety-one one?
So challenging, yes, and it's in, and it is.
So the one that left on Friday?
Yes.
Had been here.
From since July.
Okay, so had been.
She hadn't been, yeah.
He done it twelve months, he done it.
No, I mean, you gotta, you know, if, if, you gotta get your shoulders up, it's a rough sometimes, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Jenna, what's the starting wage for uh clerk two? Grade twelve step one?
Eighteen or nine clerk two. Grade, what'd you say, twelve?
Grade twelve step one.
One more minute.
Oh, would that be on Mitch's, uh, what the new one in July is?
Yeah, the new one in July is, and this is, oh, eighteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Thank you, Heather.
That's, that's part of the reason, I mean, I had to, you know, she was making whatever, you know, and I just had this opportunity and it came falling on my lap, but. You know, these girls down there, I mean. Yeah.
And, and Lee worked with Heather to review internal equity to make sure that those that we have had hired in the past that are still there, still fall in line with bringing this employee. Back, so taking a look at when we had hired this employee, her original year, we had hired two other people that year as well. Where were they, so we're maintaining internal equity while still being able to give this employee a higher starting wage. To encourage her retention, recruitment and retention.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We have a clerk two in the auditor's office. You know, well, well, um, I think Josh is.
Yeah, I believe.
Two and.
So we have a clerk two and.
Josh and.
Recorder.
Right, both.
Yeah.
And possibly.
You have some of the recorders.
Yeah, we have some in the recorder's office, and, and those clerks, whether it's a one or a two, I think every, I don't think we have any clerk ones at all. Yeah, those are all union uh positions, and so would have been worked through during the union contracts or union negotiations this past year as well. Would you approve that contract a couple of weeks ago? For July first start.
And July first is a, is a, a, a big step for, you know, I think the clerks, uh, you know, getting them to where they should be, and I. Thank you for, you know, all that, yeah.
We're still not where we need to be.
Well, I, I understand, but.
I don't know how we, I don't know how we fund it to where we think they need to be. Really, I mean, eighteen dollars an hour in the league's office.
I just got an email from a Woodbury County, or no, uh Scott County, and they're asking what the starting wages are in the counties. Because they just lost three people within the last month, and they're short, I think, five. And it's just.
It's a very different or difficult labor market for that level of a, a role because. Um, the skills needed for that role um are similar to thousands of other jobs. Out there, right, it's not like it requires a specialized IT certification or anything like that, and so the competition with. Other, other jobs is just fierce.
And the interaction with the public is, every conversation is different, and you don't know how to prepare for.
Oh, and, and it is, it, it, you know, you just try to do your best to, you know, get them to what they need, and. You know, it's not, our, sometimes our hands are tied, you know, we have, you know, we are governed by DOT, and. You know, there's things that, you know, we just can't do until, you know, they have the proper information or.
I was down there the other day getting some plates, my gosh, the people on this side of the counter, they wanna tell you.
And I listen every time, I listen with a smile.
Be hard not to be rude.
Oh, it, it, it's not worth it.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we got a motion by Shay, a second by Belt, all those in favor?
All right. Thank you, and it's for a name, do we need to put that in?
Alice thinks so.
Okay.
I don't think so, I mean, I, and the reason that I would say that is because I, it, it'll come through on a status change form as well with the name on it, and I can't guarantee that the. Applicant has already given notice at a, a previous job, so I'd really, I think, rather not, if that's okay. Yeah.
Well, that's, the status change form is already through, it's here.
It's on, okay, so then.
Yeah, it's, it's a done deal.
Go.
Yeah, can get it.
We don't need it.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. So, so, so you have three positions open?
I had nineteen people, and now I'm down to fifteen.
Are we, are you?
It's, the job is completed, right, and Lee had, has had some of these openings, maybe two for a while.
Right.
That she wasn't filling, um, and I think, I mean, I think you can definitely see the lines every single day down there, so these have been budgeted. Already and have been for a couple of years, she just hasn't necessarily always filled them, but now is looking to get full staff. Would you agree with that, Lee?
I agree.
But it is posted today, yes.
Yes, starting now, you'll be ready for September, lines come back again.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
These, these starting positions, I hear that eighteen dollars?
Today it's eighteen dollars and seventy-one cents, and so July first, we're moving that by a dollar fifty to help get closer to, to where we want. You're right, I, I agree, we need to work on raising those, but the question is, where do we get the money for that? So now that we're wrapping up budget and we've, uh, once we're done today, we'll have approved all wage increases. And I think the next plan would really be taking a look at, ideally, where would we like jobs, what would that cost us? So that you have a dollar amount to work on throughout this year to figure out how to make that happen, instead of during budget time saying. Um, what do we have, what money do we have that we can put here, let's kind of do that a little, let's reverse engineer it, this is where we would like to be. This is how much it's gonna take to get there, now how do we fund that? Um, so we can definitely start working on that, Mitch and I can start working on that, um, as soon as everything else wraps up.
And Lee, we're still upside down with the state, aren't we, as far as the services we're providing at the cost that they tell us to?
That's legislation right now to, we are asking to increase our, you know, percentage of, because they wanna go to a. You can do the work in any county, but they wanna also increase fees, but then they keep knocking the increased fees out. And they just go through the, you can do it in any county, but they don't wanna increase our fees, and they haven't been increased since nineteen ninety-one. Or I don't even, you know. So it's been a long time, you know, that, you know, we've been getting the same amount. But.
Crazy.
Yep. Hey.
Thank you.
I gotta go.
All right, Maria Seag, Administrator Public Health, and Jana Limerick, Director Human Resources. Discussion and our decision to update animal control officer job description and reclassification.
And so the animal control officer position has been at a grade fourteen since twenty seventeen. When we moved animal control into public health, and during that time, we've, we've um. I, while animal control duties are very, very, there's a level of professionalism where we need to have a, a certain. Level with the, the paperwork, the licensing, the outreach into the community, and just that. Um, that front-facing person uh for animal control, and we've, we've struggled with some of the level of professionalism. And I, I really feel that's because of the low range of the pay. And we took the job description and added in supervisory. Uh. Aspect for the on-call officers into the job description, and then moved it from a grade fourteen up to a five nineteen.
Five fourteen to a five nineteen.
Is what we're.
How significant increase is that?
Oh, twenty-four, right, so sorry, so, so sorry to clarify, so it was a grade fourteen, a union position. But specifying the supervisory roles and making this a supervisor, so having leadership um. Abilities in this position would pull that out of the union, so, so sorry, Maria was right, grade fourteen to a grade five nineteen.
Yes, and it's within our current budget, so that's not going to affect it, but one of the things that that'll do for us. Is it will, it'll increase our applicants for all of our positions for animal controls. For the animal control officer, and it'll increase the base wage for the on-call officers when they go out for response. So hopefully that'll drive more applicants for that as well.
That'll fit in the next budget year also?
Yes.
Know the difficulty you had with that, and I would like to make motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And this is just one FTE, right?
Correct.
What is the starting wage, five nineteen step one?
I, it is twenty-four forty-one.
You say there's one full-time and then several part-time?
On-call.
On-call, okay.
Three on-call.
So they only get paid if they, if they actually do something.
Yep, they get paid one rate while they're waiting and they're on-call, and then they get paid another rate if they're called into action, and, and currently. Um, there, we don't have any.
Correct.
Maria has had this position posted, so today, um, other staff in the planning and public health department. Are fulfilling the duties of this animal control position, um, because it's such a difficult position to fill and keep staff. So what we're really hoping is by elevating this position to supervisor role and elevating that pay. We're gonna get a quality professional um employee in this position, who will then, you know, and will help. Get on-call staff, um, and train them and be able to supervise them in a way and, and uh. Continue these, these roles, go, we are, right now, we don't have any animal control staff, the job is being done, so, but um, we think this will really help.
Yes, cool.
Yes, you may.
So Jenna, you said twenty-four forty-one?
Correct.
Does that go to twenty-five ninety-one in Jan, in July?
Correct, yep, the twenty-four forty-one is today's uh starting rate.
All right, help me out again, what, what's the starting wage of a nine-one-one operator?
One moment, I can tell you. Twenty-three fifty.
And what's the starting wage of a jailer?
Twenty-five dollars.
I think we're too high here.
I think, I, not, having read the other job descriptions, the difference would be that there's supervise, supervision that's required from this position. And management coordination of schedules.
Other positions within the five nineteen pay grade are natural resource technician in conservation, IT office technician. Our promotion and outreach coordinator in conservation.
It's just always a challenge to get the right people, right, right pay, uh, these, these positions. At least, you know, what I'm hearing anyway, just difficult to fill, uh, elevating that position to a supervisory role. Would, would help fill probably with, with that expertise and help fill the other positions, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what we're hoping, yes, that is.
Okay, and so that's, that's where we want this to go. Uh, well, again, I'm, 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 I, I know the challenge that we face, but again, these, these, these jobs. These positions need to be filled. Some, it, as, as best we can, some of, I, I'd be willing to give this a try.
Maria, our little towns pay a certain amount for the serfs, correct?
Yes.
Is there a possibility of upping that to them?
Is there a possibility of upping that to them a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, we, we do charge them on, on the, their population, but it's a gradual increase that we want to do with them. So we're currently working on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, it's been a real difficult deal living in a small town. It, um, a lot of people have complaints when they're not getting answered. People get upset.
Yeah, well, and I, I guess one of the problems or the challenges of the small towns out further, like walnut might face would be an, an animal that's running at large by the time we responded to it, that would, the dog's very likely gone. And we still go out and attempt to pick up the animal, but, um, I mean, we're, we are there for any response to bite calls or incidents or running at large, but barking dogs.
We were requesting a five nineteen, the pay grade one down, five eighteen, starts at twenty three sixty. So if you were curious to go down.
Twenty three sixty still puts it ahead of a starting wage of a nine one one operator.
You're correct.
The, the only supervisory ex, uh, role for this person is to, um, uh, make contact with on-call people, right? No one else.
They coordinate the, they would coordinate the on-call schedule. They coordinate with the cities, uh, ordering dog license tags for them. And then the, uh, the contracts with the cities. If there's any update in the contract, sending out renewal letters, things like that to the general public communication with them.
And if the city has a complaint against animal control, it would be this person who would respond or it would be?
It, it would be this person that would respond and would receive the complaint. And then if there was anything after that, it would come to me.
But, you know, we've came a long way in trying to get nine one one in the jail at a starting wage. And we're still not there yet. And I think, I, I think I think this position should, should, shouldn't even be close to their responsibilities, so. But, you know, that's, that's just my opinion. I think it's too much.
Jenna? What are you thinking?
We've had conversations, um, uh, Maria and Matt and I have had conversations about this position, uh, the, the difficulty, um. I will be honest, I do personally struggle having it, um, higher than the nine one one position. I don't, I, I'm, we, we talked about how can we get a qualified professional applicant for this position and other than pay, we're struggling. I mean, when we've had it open in the past, we just don't get anything. We, we just don't get applicants. So this was, um, going to be our, our try to fix it. Um, but I am concerned about the nine one one pay as well.
I could see where this position would have a high likelihood of workman's comp. I mean, there's potentially, potentially, you know.
Hogs, cats, skunks, groundhogs.
Snakes.
Well, believe me, it's, it's not a job that I would personally want to do. However, um, I think, uh, I think we should take another look at it and.
Can we get closer to nine one one?
Other options and for that, I'll make a motion to table this until we could.
Well, we, we already have a motion.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, we've got a motion by Shay and a second by George Genson to update the animal control officer job description and reclassification as submitted.
You know, I, I, I know how difficult nine one one can be and how difficult it can be to hire kind of operators. But in my mind, okay, we have, we have, uh, we have this position, this possible difficult to fill, to keep. Uh, I, I don't, I don't really necessarily want to equate the two because they're not, they're not the same job. Uh, you got animal control, you have somebody that, that actually is taking it bigger risks than sitting down monitoring the screens in front of their, you know, in front of them. You got somebody that's going to take on, you know, possibly a, a rabid dog or, you know, whatever. Uh, and that they're going to have to be in a position to, to, you know, to do that. Uh, because goodness knows we hear in the papers all the time and the news all the time about animals attacked, uh, you know, I, uh, the other day, I, I, a, a pit bull, I believe, uh, killed its owner, for God sakes. Uh, you know, those kinds of things, this is what this position, this person in this position has to deal with. Uh, so I'm going to say that I'm not, I, I know our nine one one operators need more. I certainly sympathize with their, their situation, but in this instance, I'm not going to equate nine one one and animal control. I, I'm, I'm going to say I'm in favor of what you're asking us to do.
Well, sit down. I, I would never compare nine one one to animal control to an animal control officer. That officer doesn't, animal control officer doesn't have a job. Doesn't have a direction to go, has nothing without nine one one operator getting the information on where they need to go. Yeah, I, 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 I really don't know. So, but that, you know, that's me. I won't say another word.
We're, we're just talking one position. Call for a vote.
Going to give Scott a chance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To say.
Well, I don't. That's. Got to have the animal control officer.
I, I just, I've seen a lot of stray dogs running out in the rural side of the county and I think we need more attention to that problem. All right. So. All those in favor?
Vote.
Okay, Melvin, will you please call the roll?
For the animal control officer job description and reclassification. Uh, Chairman Miller?
Aye.
Supervisors Belt? Uh, Wickman?
Aye.
Shay?
Aye.
And Jorgensen?
Aye.
You're going to put that on the new template, the new job description?
Um, yes, yes, we will. That's why I didn't put a lot of attention to this template, knowing that it would be going through this process, the job description update process.
Jenna Limerick, Director, Human Resources. Discussion and our decision to approve an authorized board to sign Potawatomi County Sheriff's Deputies Association Wage Reopener Agreement effective July one, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
And the deputy contract is good through twenty twenty six, so the only thing that you have to approve today are the wages. Um, the, uh, appendix A is in there, which, um, shows you what the wages are. We increased, um, each step or not each step, step one by a dollar fifty.
Oh, second.
Motion by Wickman, second by Shay to approve an authorized support to sign the Sheriff's Deputies Association Wage Reopener. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Uh, aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Jenna. All right, committee appointments, um. I had an interesting conversation yesterday with Walter Rodriguez at Centro Latino. Um, he was reaching out at the direction of his board of directors to meet with strategic partners. And he had just finished up a meeting with the mayor of Council of Love's when I came in for my conversation. And it's just amazing the depth of services that that office is providing and they need our support in any way, shape or form, and we're looking at exploring different ways that we can assist them. And then I attended the rural summit in Ames last Thursday. And advanced Southwest Iowa Shalimar presented one session and I went as a representative of the Whitea Board. And Macedonia Heart and Soul did a presentation in one of the sessions and it was really cool to see my hometown on the big screen being showcased as far as what's going on in that community. And it was just Rachel Allen's worth. It was just a very good day to hear a lot of different ideas in a short amount of time.
Good.
Right?
Uh, went to the VA last week. And then we met with the medical examiner. And I was up at Hitchcock for a meeting. They're looking to reconfigure the lodge up there. And then the sheriff took my daughter to lunch and, uh, she mentioned something about a promotions deal out the sheriff's board, so I text the sheriff about two and he said, come on out. So I went out. And I talked to him and he's, they were going to have another one for nine one one this week and they're supposed to be sending us an invite for the whole board. So that, I thought that was important for us to be at those meetings, so I think we need to participate in those.
But we can only participate if we know about.
I, I agree. And I would have sent an invite, but I had about a half hour to get there. That was it, so.
Uh, yeah, I was at the VA, Brian. It's, that's, uh, I, I, I really like that, uh, that, uh, way that they're running their, that service. I appreciate Peggy in there and all the board of directors. They do, they do a second job.
Thanks, Jeff. Kim? God?
I don't think so. Seems like I'm missing something, but I think what it was.
Oh, my, my Melvin.
When, uh, Bentley mentioned, uh, Heart and Soul, you mentioned that May fifth, fill the grandstand. It's some of these. On May fifth, they're, uh, trying to fill the grandstand at Donnie for a picture, put them here on the wall, whether, well, you're aware of it because you were reading. Uh, but some of the other supervisors might want to go and watch a ballgame and get your picture on the, on the wall in Macedonia. Fun event. On May fifth at six thirty.
It will be a.
At six thirty?
Six thirty, but Ruby told me.
No, it didn't say this.
And that the, uh, is that the, uh, food making company? Put that on.
No, no. No, this is in Macedonia. They're going to, want to get a photographer to take a picture of the full grandstand there at Donnie's ballpark. And then he'll take the, uh, photograph and recreate it on a mural on the, uh, one of the building walls. And they're getting, I think, two murals. I don't know. I was trying to figure out when they were having this, when they were having this. And I walked right by, uh, Brad Swoke, City Councilman, and tried to find Ruby Bentley's phone number. Could have just asked him. But, uh, no, it'll be a fun, if you want to watch a ballgame, they're bringing out the organist from the Storm Chasers. And he's going to set up his organ out there and, uh, play whatever they play, take me out to the ballgame, I guess.
I'll make a motion to.
Have we got anybody on public speaking?
We got a few more documents to sign. All right, second by Belt, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Forty-four, I got signatures to sign.